All this meeting, would you all stay and join me?
To the flag of the United States of America, in which the Republic of which stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time, it's called Tomac.
Not in two minutes.
Hi, I'm Josh Natali. I was here last time and you guys spoke about only speaking on things on the agenda. And so I'm not here to talk much, but you mentioned something last, Josh Natali. You mentioned something last time about how we keep showing up and saying the same thing. So I just wanted to read something quick to kind of explain myself as to why we do that. So since we are one nation under God, I figured I would read a story that Jesus told to explain why we keep coming back. Says here. There was in a certain city, a judge who did not fear God nor regard man. Now there was a widow in that city and she came to him saying, get justice for me from my adversary. And he would not for a while, but afterward he said within himself, though I do not fear God nor regard man, yet because this widow troubles me, I will avenge her lest by her continual coming she weary me. So my intent by continuing, continuing to ask you guys to protect women is not to say that you guys are evil or unjust or anything like that. It's just that my hope is that if you're not going to do it because it's the right thing to do, that maybe you'll do it to get us to stop coming and hounding you guys. So that's all I just wanted to say. Thank you very much. God bless you guys.
There are no communications this evening.
Yeah, take mine, take mine.
Because you know I don't have any patience to. I get it. Yeah, so we, the superintendent does a Friday report and then you do a Sunday report. And so if anybody's not getting them, it could be that they go into spam or something and they're not getting them, notify the superintendent's office and they'll make sure you get them, right? Okay, superintendent, superintendent, though student report. What happened? One month left and they've abandoned us already. I feel like a parent. I feel like a parent. Okay, if there's no student report, just a reminder, graduation is May. I can't believe it. I think it was July 20th when I graduated. Kidding, I'm exaggerating. Really? It's on in May? Alright, good for them. Alright, superintendent's report, superintendent.
So I just want to remind everyone, if you don't already know, this is Staff Appreciation Week. It is time for us to thank our staff, our teachers. It's also Nurses Week this week, so we have nurses in our schools. So it's a great opportunity for all of us to thank educators and our nurses and our staff in our buildings. So if you happen to be out and about, if you can remember that, that would be wonderful. Wednesday, May 7th, we have an early release day for our students. So please be sure to check with your child's schools to make sure you know the dismissal time to ensure a safe and smooth transition for our students. It is a full day for our staff. It is a professional development day. So this will allow us to have some great time to work with our staff on the latest professional learning. We have some exciting news. Usually I don't get to read all of these things because our students tell us these things, but our CTEI Skills USA participant is going to Nationals in Atlanta. So our junior Zoe Tetralt won the culinary arts competition over the weekend. So we congratulate Zoe. We're very proud. Our casting crew of Lemonster Middle School Theater Group, The Prince and the Princess, took home gold in the, this year's METG Middle School Festival. So we're so excited for them and there were many students of that group that received honors, several All-Star company award winners. So we've had some exciting things happen recently in both the high school and the middle school grade levels. Also, MCAS is still going on. I feel like I've been saying this for the last like 10 meetings, probably four, but we're nearing the end. So please check with your child's school about their MCAS schedule so that we're sure students are ready to take those tests. And as I said, we're almost near the end. And then finally, I just urge everyone to check our calendars because there is a lot going on in the district, at school, at all of our schools. And we love for people to come and participate. So that's it for me.
I just wanted to add that I know our athletic director has been inducted to the football hall of fame.
Yep, that was yesterday. They had an event yesterday, so Dave Palazzi was honored at that event. And I heard from several people that were there that it was a wonderful event. So congratulations to Mr. Palazzi.
Are we voting on the, end of last day of school tonight? Because we could do that right now, I mean while we're talking about the calendar.
There's a, there's a little bit of, there's, it's different this year. So as you all remember, we had a, an unexpected fire on January 6th at our, in our high school cafeteria, which prevented us from having school that day. I did reach out to the Commissioner of Education to see if we could get a waiver because all of our, our schools have to go for 180 days. I was not able to do that. So our official last day of school for kindergarten through eighth grade is going to be Monday, June 16th. And our high school, Lemonster High School and CTEI, this building actually has to go an additional day, which would be Tuesday, the 17th.
And that will be a half day, I'm presuming?
So both days would be half days.
It will be productive days.
Absolutely. Your books, I mean, no, the news is already gone.
So I just wanted to clarify that as well, that there are two different last days because of that fire.
Right.
A motion to approve the last day.
Last day of school.
Fire the K through 8th on June 16th and the high school for June 17th, both being half days.
Okay, Evan, more than a second by Melissa. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, those opposed, okay? And now back to the regular schedule here. We'll go back to the budget presentation for 2026.
Take two. Take two. And Kyle is already moving. He is so quick. Robin, would you like an introduction on this one or?
Just jump right in.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you. Good evening. So tonight we're going to revisit the key elements of the fiscal year 2026 budget proposal, originally presented at the meeting held on April 7th. Fiscal 26, the preliminary increase in our net school spending is $7,579,126. Of this, $5,952,698 comes from Chapter 78 and $1,626,428 from the local contribution. This amount is not final yet. The House and Senate are still going to debate on their versions before negotiating a unified version, which will then be presented to us likely June or July. The Student Opportunity Act, I feel it's important to mention, is now in its fifth year, continuing to address disparities for our low income students, English learners and students with special needs. For fiscal 26, Lemmester Public Schools is receiving an additional 3.3 million in funding due to a 9.1% increase in the low income student rate. The district's low income enrollment is determined by the categories of public assistance programs, students certified as low income, and those identified as homeless through McKinney-Bento. The other key adjustments in the fiscal 26 foundation budget include a distinct inflation rate for health insurance, costs increased funding for in district special education, and higher per pupil allocations for English learners. The department calculates foundation enrollment using student specific data. From fiscal 25 to 26, district wide enrollment increased by 113 students to 6,122 as of October 1st of the prior year, which is the number that they use to calculate. The fiscal 26 general fund budget is supplemented by several additional resources, including revolving accounts. These include your circuit breaker, which helps offset the special education tuition costs, and school choice, which, school choice, excuse me, which covers costs associated with students attending from out of district. These funds categorized under other revenue and revolving include both estimated fiscal 26 revenue and our carry forward revenue from fiscal 25. Additionally, the district receives reoccurring federal and state grant funding through the Department of Education to support our goals. It's also important to note that the one time federal funding provided for COVID has now been fully expended. The fiscal 26 general fund budget request is divided into seven categories in this very pretty pie chart. We're going to start with our wages and salaries and our benefits, which collectively account for 80% of the total budget. In fiscal 26, wages and salaries are accounting for 63% of the general fund budget. This includes contractual increases such as the cost of living adjustments, step increases, lane changes, longevity stipends, extracurricular stipends, all totaling $3,902,700. Additionally, $882,000 is allocated for 12 unfilled posted positions that we would like to carry forward to fiscal 26 from 2025. And $925,000 is budgeted for 12 new positions, which are essential to address the anticipated enrollment growth, class sizes and student needs. The district is requesting an increase in the athletic stipend budget from $350,000 to $385,000 to support the contractual adjustment for fiscal 26. And in total, the district is requesting funding for 930 full time equivalent positions, amounting to $70,37,582. Benefits and fixed charges account for 17% of the budget, covering health, dental and life insurance for both active and retired employees as well as their beneficiaries. Historically, our increases in those costs have ranged from 0 to 14%. And we work closely with the city comptroller to project accurately on that. For fiscal 26, we are requesting a 10% increase totaling $1,581,372, driven by increased membership, new position and rising insurance costs. Special education tuitions account for 6% of the proposed budget totaling $9,277,000, partially offset by revolving funds. These costs fluctuate from year to year due to many factors, including individual student service needs, new students moving into the district, aging out students. The state actually sets the rate increases for our out of district placements with a 4.5% increase approved for fiscal 26. Over the past 14 years, we've seen ranges from 2 to 17.9% increase. For fiscal 26, working with Laura, we're projecting a 6.8% increase in special education tuition costs totaling $590,089. Additionally, the district is carrying forward $3.2 million in circuit breaker revolving to help offset some of these expenses. Indirect charges represent expenses incurred by the city in support of the schools. Jen over at the city provides us with this annual agreement. What happened Kyle?
You lost it.
Where's the Kyle God?
You wanted it, you got 10.
Only one's good. One is plenty.
One was enough.
Alright.
It's alright, he'll get it, he'll get it.
See if I can help him out here. I'm driving Kyle. In fiscal, sorry, in fiscal 26, the total estimated indirect charges are $6,776,429. There we go. Lemmester schools have made significant technological advancements over the past few years, enhancing the educational experience for both students and faculty. Our technology department is dedicated to ensuring equitable access for all students and staff, offering hands-on experiential learning opportunities. In fiscal 26, we will continue investing in network infrastructure in, to improve our internet connectivity and reliability. The utilities, repair and maintenance budget represents 4% of our budget for fiscal 26, amounting to $4,709,384. This covers repair and maintenance for all 11 buildings, utilities, custodial supplies, as you can see, trash removal, all that good stuff. The remaining 3% of the fiscal 26 budget proposal totaling $3,595,691 covers essential expenses that directly impact students in the classroom and our district as a whole. As you can see, examples of that, medical therapeutic services, instructional, safety and security, athletics, we've got pathways at the high school, support for special education, and much, much more. So the Lemmester Public Schools is requesting $70,37,582 in wages and salaries, $34,499,878 in expenses, $6,776,429 in indirect charges, for a total fiscal 22 net school spending needs based budget of $111,313,888. Thank you very much and we're open for questions.
Questions? Go ahead.
Sure.
The assuming that building into this, updating our IT replacement from books that at this cost is getting pretty well aged.
Yep, we have a schedule. Sorry, did you want to take that? Oh, your hand. I thought you were raising your hand. Sorry.
I can. We have a scheduled replacement plan and so we're going to continue with that plan. Nothing will change. So we will update computers depending on grade level so that nobody ends up with a computer that's completely outdated.
And the last part of it is, as we all know, the school committee has been asking salaries, budget has to go back to the city. You know, there's been some discussion potentially in the city about getting a special increase, although there's not been a petition. If you're asked, is there rumor, what is the rumor? Through the chair, you want to?
How about, how about we just pick a number tonight? I mean, I don't want to embarrass anybody or make anybody upset. What if you start off like 2,000 or another $2,000 or something and then put something in there that's tied to the consumer price index, like that's how my pay is set. If the economy's bad and it's not an increase, you don't get anything. And that's the hardest thing is to ask for an increase when the economy's not good. But on the other hand, sometimes it goes up three and a half percent. So start somewhere and then it's just tied to an index after that. Yeah.
Don't know what that number was exactly, so.
Yeah, and I don't want to, I mean, when I, when I spoke with Mark, the, the consumer price index was always included, but when we talked, I thought it was around 3,500 is what we had talked about.
An increase? Okay, I wasn't part of the discussion.
Not increase, but total.
So that's.
That's not the number that you had told me.
What did I say?
You said 4,500, which we thought was unusual, is what you had told me.
Okay.
But maybe it was more 4,000 or something like that. An increase, a total, not an increase of.
And I don't know that we need to decide this.
Yeah, we don't.
We know the budget pulls up back to the city council and part of the question's going to be, did you put this number into the budget and what can you afford? And I don't want it to come back and be, well.
And so when I spoke with Mark too, the other thing was that we, the way that we did this the last two times doesn't make us look good. It doesn't make them, it puts city council in a bad position. When Mark and I spoke, we discussed numbers and he was going to come back with what he thought would, without speaking with everybody, what he thought could get passed and then make a recommendation. So he, he said he was going to speak with you.
Alright, so I'm proposing, why don't we just, right now you get 2,000, why don't we make it 4,500? Can we afford that into the school budget? Alright, so somebody wants to make, I don't know, it's a starting point, I don't know what to say.
I'm concerned that we're going to get back in the same position that we were in last time.
So you had the meeting.
Right, so I think what we, we need to say is up to 4,500, can we afford that? And that should be what our question is for this meeting.
So I'm proposing.
Won't be more than that.
Then you run with it and if, and if it doesn't pass then.
Would that be attached to the 3.5?
After, yes.
After?
No, whatever the consumer price index is.
Consumer price index.
I, I can't propose it, but you can.
Right, so I propose up to.
Okay.
So that gives a range for you to talk to Mark.
Okay.
Not to exceed 4,500. And our business manager is saying that we can afford up to that amount.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I just think, I just think that, yeah. So I'll second that. What, I just, I think.
My only concern is there has to be a petition attached to this and someone has to do it. And honestly, I, I don't feel like Mark is in the place right now that he is going to do that.
We can do, I think the superintendent and I can do the petition, so it's worded correctly.
She can.
She can.
Because it would be asking her bosses for a raise, to get, you know.
Better stop being nice to us.
So I think that for this.
We'll write it up.
Right, so for the purpose of this meeting, we just need to have people know that we can afford that.
We have an attorney, Mark can write it up. Our attorney Mark can write it up for us, submit it, so it's all legal.
And you can negotiate with Mark.
Okay. I think you should be part of the conversation too.
I honestly think you should just submit it because Mark is just going to speak for Mark. He doesn't know what the rest of the council is going to say. I think you bring it to them. This is much more reasonable than where, what they interpreted to be last
But honestly, you're the one who told Greg to go to Mark. So he went to Mark.
And I think we have something there. So let's just.
But that's different than the discussion that Greg had with Mark.
Without.
You get two now, another 2,500.
But he did say that he needed to talk to you, or he wanted to talk to you. So I, I think that we need to bring.
Alright, so this doesn't have to be unbinding. This could be a resolution saying we support an increase of 2,500 on top of the 2,000 consumer price index. It's a resolution and where it goes.
Could you as the mayor just bring down a communication?
Yes, I, I just, I offered that a little while ago. I can do that.
So we'll have something written up in your seminar.
Yes, alright.
We have to sign, do we have to?
No, we're going to take a vote. Yeah, I know, and we're just answering. Alright, so there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Okay. You have the record? Thank you. Okay, Melanie, anything else? Anything else for Melanie? And I think, and I think this should be said because we did, you know, talk about it, just that we have new students, we're hiring new positions, we're just going to keep an eye on that as our.
Very thoughtful about it.
Right, and I just like to compliment everybody involved in the process. And I said this prior to five minutes of six when our executive session was over, that school systems, if you watch, I don't know if it's Channel 5 or 7 today, but it's all the news across the state right now about school systems and cities that are in trouble and for a number of reasons. And so they're trying overrides and debt exclusions and they're not passing. If they are, it's contentious. They're talking about laying people off, closing schools. So we've always been on the safe side of this and I think it's, it's, it's done well for us. And I think our system's in place for our accounting are the best they've been in decades, thanks to Melanie and your staff, superintendent and everybody else here. But I just think we have to keep an eye on it, not as a bad thing, but a good thing to be proactive, just in case those numbers change.
Absolutely. You're not one of those districts.
I got what I'm saying, exactly, right. And it's because we've kept to those principles and, you know, stayed within our budget and didn't use gimmicks to kind of do it. And I feel bad for those communities because it's not the time to be laying off people. Mr. Ron?
Please forgive me. I was listening, I know Eve said something and I, it just went from one ear and came on, I just, when you were saying Steve, and please, anybody, you can correct me from wrong, you were saying that there was going to be some, there were going to be some, 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 some teachers that maybe they weren't going to be renewed?
Yes.
That was executive session.
And it just picked my interest because how much money are we talking?
So, so some of this is a contract, so we don't want to get into.
It's not about contracts, is it? I don't know, I talk about contracts, I'm just talking about the money.
It happens every year, Ron. It's more aligned with.
To piggyback onto what Dean was saying.
Yeah.
How, 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 how is that going to be affecting us or not affecting us?
The. It, it happens each year. It's attached to a professional status situation for teachers, so, you know.
Well, Robin, sure. So that, I think what we're talking about is non-renewals for various reasons, but it has nothing to do with the actual positions. All of the FTEs are remaining in place. So we are not losing any positions.
I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted.
Could be staff changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it might be that things didn't work out on both sides.
Right, right, right.
And maybe somebody decides to leave the system or, yeah. But that's not going to change the budget. And again, remember, sometimes during the middle of the year or later, we make transfers from salary if we can't fill positions, transfer it back to expenses.
Of course, of course.
Alright. So do we have a motion and a second for the school budget or do we? Public hearing, okay. So at this time we'll have a public hearing if anyone would like to speak far against pro or con for the fiscal year 2026 budget. You can do so by just coming up to the microphone and stating your name for the record. Once again, one last time. Okay, if not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Other thing I wanted to say is just so everybody's updated on the new school building project at Fallbrook. So several months ago, if you remember, we went down to the city council and did a whole presentation on the new school project. And it gets a little confusing because the state uses numbers like 76% or 74% reimbursement. But I wanted to make it clear to the city council that there's, that the state calls, MSBA calls eligible and ineligible expenses. So in other words, they control what they consider, well, we count that towards, you know, we'll, we'll help reimburse this, we won't help reimburse that, but we'll help do this, but we won't help. So they're the ones that determine it's arbitrary or it's their rules. So the actual reimbursement rate, I think superintendent, comes down to around what, 56%, somewhere around there. So that same night, and the reason we did this is because the question is going to happen very soon, how is the city going to pay for this? So this isn't like Sam said, it was 11, 12 million dollars and you can do it within the budget. Isn't the library, isn't this building where we did it for 45 million, it's all been in the budget, it's probably around 130 million dollars by the time we get over. So they're paying 56%. It's probably around a hundred thirty million dollars by the time we get, uh, over, so they're paying fifty-six percent. So, uh, w- w- we actually, um, passed, city council passed the meals tax. So that's gonna generate, we think, now, we don't know, we looked at other communities, talked to the Department of Revenue, we think and we hope it's gonna generate around a million dollars. We have a bond that's, that's, uh, we have a, a, a bond that is, um, pretty much up. So we're gonna take that money and put into that. On our best calculations, we're still about, and this is being on the safe side, about six hundred thousand dollars short. So what I've been trying to do is keep the council updated, we went, made the presentation, then later I said, hey, by the way, we went to this meeting, we had this meeting, remember? We're gonna have to, there'll be a deficit, there'll be a delta, we're gonna have to make up for that. And as you know, there are a couple of ways you do that, either you do a debt exclusion, which means you take a vote. And the good part of that is. The bad part is it raises taxes, the bad po- uh, the, the bad part is it raises taxes, the good part is when the bond is paid for, that money goes away. So that's, that, whatever that increase, or you do a debt exclu- I mean, or you raise. The money within, so in other words, you just increase taxes, because we have excess labor capacity, which means we can raise the taxes. So very soon, like very, very soon, I sent another letter out to say, okay, it's showtime, we're gonna have to tell the state how we're gonna pay for this project. So that's pretty much an update on where the financial piece of this happened, so the council will have to make a decision on, you know, do we. Dead exclusion for six hundred thousand dollars a year? Most communities do a debt exclusion for the whole project. Uh, but the part that always gets me is how. A year. Oh, this is a hundred thirty million, we're, we're only getting reimbursed fifty-six million. Of a hundred thirty million dollar project.
Six hundred thousand a year for how many years?
Um, if we bond, it depends, if we bend it for, you know. We could bond it for thirty, but pay it off in twenty, so it's less. Um, that's, that's just being on the safe side of it all.
Really big, big sale.
Yeah, it would have to be a very, very big sale.
A big sales.
So I, I, I'm just keeping you up to date, it's, it's not seventy-six percent like they keep, you know, we even got into a little. Back and forth there, and you say, well, you keep telling people seventy-six percent, and then I gotta go back and tell the taxpayers, it's not really seventy-six percent, it's fifty-six percent. You know, y- y- you're messing me up here, and, and so just so everybody knows, that's, that'll have to be in the next decision, and that's gonna have to be made by the council is to, you know, we're, how, how do we fund this? And, um, but remember, we're, we're putting up over three point something million a year. In debt service to pay for this, so the, the delta is six hundred thousand. Now, that could, it could be less than that, it could be five, it could be four forty, we don't know. And we especially don't know, based on the meals tax, cuz we haven't had it in place for a full year yet, it starts in June, July, so we, we haven't had it, so we, it could be. It, that could be the one point six, that could be the other six hundred thousand, we don't know, we're using, just to be safe, we're using a million. So that'll, you know, that's coming quick. Uh, superintendent, I, at, the other day's meeting Craig said from. Our, uh, engineers and architects said, we thought it was June, but then the comptroller said today that it's like the end of this month, so, yeah. So we're trying to straighten that out, we, we, they need an answer, so they need to know. Th- th- actually, at the last meeting, were you on the, at the last meeting? Um, I think it was one school decertified, they couldn't come up with the, the money to do the school, so they had to pull themselves off the list. It's good for somebody that's gonna move up one, but for the school system that couldn't afford to do it, you know, who's been working for years. And Melissa, the thing is, you work years to get to that point. Yeah, that's where, what's that? Five years, and they've been in five years as well, I think they've been in a little longer, so just to find out, they can't do the project, but it's all part of the steps.
Was five years ago and what's plus now is very different.
Right.
So what? I mean, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. What happens when the school gets certified to that? That, that.
You mean, what's the next steps?
Next steps for the school, or what happens?
Well, let's back out of it, we'll be in the ground next October or something of next year, that's like when we'll be in, we'll start digging. That's a big project, so, uh, but yeah, we'll start from dig, you know, from shovel in the ground, the demolition of the school is. Twenty twenty-nine or something, when, is that, that, yeah, it's, it's out there. So, um. There's a lot of logistics to keep the Fallbrook open while we build a new school. Um. And again, we haven't bid the project either, so we don't know what the final costs are gonna be, but these are all estimates right now, so it could be less, so that six might be less. But I think we use the six as a safety net. Um, so we could end up authorized in six hundred thousand, never use it, so then taxes don't go up that much, you know, they don't go up to full amount. But that's where we're at.
And that's considering that the city doesn't have any other source of revenue.
Um, correct.
Potentially.
Correct.
In the near future.
Right, like new growth, we'd have to, you know, pick up new growth. You know. Something big happens, then maybe that's offset, but we're just staying on the safe side of it, given the numbers that we, that we have and we know. The unknown is the unknown, hopefully the, we'll, we'll bring in the sorts of revenue that the other communities have in the meals tax. Alright, so that's a, that's an update on that while we're talking finances, okay, school choice?
Good evening. Uh, it is that time of year again for you all to review the school choice guidelines. And vote on whether or not you approve Leominster Public Schools to be a school choice district. This is very misleading because my present, this is my presentation, so there's, yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
So we're just voting to be. And that's all determined, same as every year, whatever spaces are available, that'll be determined as we know that, right?
Correct.
So this is just to say we're a school choice in community.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Motion to approve school choice.
It, there's a.
Public hearing for school choice, okay?
Both two?
So, yes, you can.
Yes.
Okay, would anyone like to? Speak to the issue on the agenda, which is school choice incoming? If so, you can come to the front and, um, just your name for the record. Second time? Third time? If not, we'll close the public hearing. How many students overall do we take in now? Versus how many go out?
We have, so not having the numbers right in front of.
Just rough enough, just.
Approximately about two hundred coming in.
Coming in.
They, they basically wash each other out, to be honest, yeah.
Yeah.
Meaning what, what do you mean, Jim, by this?
So the students that live in Leominster, there are some students that leave Leominster to go somewhere else.
Or move, but you wanna stay in the system.
That wouldn't be a useful choice.
Choice, right?
Yes, typically does.
We don't let them, I mean, in terms of that, cuz the question I'm asking is regarding to, you can't ask specifics regarding.
We are not allowed, we have changed.
Right, yeah.
Based upon the protocol, the requirements now, we're not allowed to ask anything, it's all blind, and it's anonymous, and it's a Google form, and.
Gender and grade level, and that's it.
That's it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Make a motion to approve school choice?
Second by Ron?
Yep.
Any questions or comments? If not, we're all on the same page, all in favor? Those opposed? See that?
Thank you.
Very efficient. Yeah, okay, so we need to vote on the budget, we did the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget? Mr. Ron, look at you, second, anyone? Alright, this is a voice vote, we'll start with Mr. Ron.
Yay. Yeah, yay.
Yay.
Yay, yay.
Alright, superintendent, you have a twenty twenty-six budget. SOA plan, who's gonna speak to that? Look at her, she wastes no time. Ooh. You know, we were at a, we were at a city council meeting. And it was, I, it was going on forever, John Savatelli was the, he was the, the, uh, on the school committee at the time. And he says, how long are we gonna, only he could get away with this, he said, how long are we gonna talk about this? How long, he says, the Celtics are on at nine, and I said, only he could get away with it, if you know what I mean.
Yes.
Yes, you know what I mean.
Thank you all, um, for the time to go over this.
Extra copies here if anybody wants.
So the Student Opportunity Act, uh, is, um, part of, um. What we're doing for funding, and it does come from mass general law. What you have in front of you is just a review of the information from last year. So if you remember about this time, we came in front of you with an updated three-year plan that you did approve. And now I'm just coming forward with, um, a yearly progress report. So I, I also use this format as one of my communication tools in the plan for the community, so. Um, I will speak quickly, but just to the point. Uh, we here in Leominster are using the Student Opportunity Act funds to support our English learners, our students with disabilities, our students in poverty. And our Hispanic slash Latino students. The two, um, areas that we are using the funds for are to continue to implement a multi-tiered system of support. That helps all students progress academically and in their social, emotional, and behavioral development. As well as selecting and implementing high-quality and engaging instructional materials. To support cultural and linguistically sustaining practices and foster deeper learning. So we have a group, um, a number of our high-risk students that we are focusing these funds on, and then we picked two. Out of a, a very long list of research-based opportunities, and, and that's what we're focusing on these funds for. Um, I have provided you with some positions that we have put in place for this school year, and that's what we reported on. Just so that you have an idea of how some of the funds are being targeted. Um, and just a couple of them, a pupil personality administrator in support of the tiered system. A new administrator of behavioral and therapeutic services. Um, these are in place now that, and you had approved them for the budget of the twenty-five year. Um, we have an attendance monitor at the high school. A guidance position has been added, so it's not just one, but added to the guidance suite at the middle school level and additional intervention. We also have, um, targeted positions for the high-quality implementation of materials. And they include core content specialists, so we are lucky to have four elementary, four middle slash high school. And two English learner support content specialists that provide just in time. Um, help and coaching for our staff. And we have added, um, multilingual teacher and two multilingual power professionals at the high school level for this year. And a special education teacher has been added to the, the group for this year. There are many other things that we have talked about in our, um, plan and, and our report that we sent, um, sent in, it has been approved by D E S I. It was approved in April, but again, um, I appreciate your time so that we can let the community know how these, um, Student Opportunity Act funds are being used here in Leominster.
And these are reported back to the state as well, because they wanna know how we're using them, and they're giving us money, and they want the, the funds attached to progress, right, I mean, to, to accountability, right? So we're sending them that information, so they have an understanding as well.
Right, last year we sent them the three-year plan, which they approved.
Right.
And then this year, we were required to send this update as to what we had done, and we have received approval on, on that as well. We, we received approval last week from the Department of Education.
Any questions at all on the Student Opportunity Act? Alright, you don't need to vote or anything from us, this is just an update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now move to the superintendent mid-year evaluation.
So, um, the, um, subcommittee, um, for the superintendent's goals met briefly, and, um. We are very late with our mid-year, and it's now time to do the end of the year. Um, so we basically felt that, you know, based on the information that the superintendent had provided, uh, through meetings and other venues. Um, we feel that she is on target and has been doing it, you know, a very nice job, and we're very supportive of our superintendent. And we will be finalizing, um, the end of the year in a more formal manner. Um, but right now, we're, we're on target with her goals and what she's set out to do. So we appreciate her jumping in, it's been, uh, you know, I'm sure a big learning curve this year, um, and we appreciate all her efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Okay.
So having said that, um, Chris, we will need to put this on our June, uh. Agenda, and, um, we will need folks to actually fill out, um, the form.
Alright, thank you. Let's go to approve of the minutes, April seventh. Has everybody had a chance to read them? Alright. Motion to approve? Okay, we have a second, any questions or comments? Everything looks good, Chris? Alright, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Subcommittee reports, do we have anything for policy?
Sure, so, um, we have a lot of, um, if you want me to do the, uh, action items in the subcommittee.
Is this five A on?
Yes.
Is that what you're, you wanna just, you wanna just read them, or?
Sure, so we're doing the, um, first reading, um, of the following policies, the B H E, use of electronic messaging by the, um, school, uh, community. Um, E H A A, district security relating to technology, the E H B, data and recording retention. G B E E, personnel use of technology. Is it U N D? I N D, sorry. I J, I can't read. Access to digital resources, I J N D, the use of technology and instruction, K D C, uh, community use of digital resources. K D C V, district website and social media, J L C D, administering medication to students. Those are all a first reading of those policies.
And I think the first one, I just wanted clarification, use of electronic messaging by school committee, is those message boards that we have now in front of the schools? Or when we push the messages out? Okay. Gotcha, it's an, it's update from where we had, the policy that we had before. Gotcha, alright. So there's no vote on this?
Yeah, well, there is a first reading, so we do need to vote for a first reading, and we'll do a second to make the final letter next.
Ron? Make a motion?
Make a motion.
Look at you. That was like three in one night.
We'll get it tonight.
Ever since we talked about giving a raise.
Celtics.
Or if he wants to see the Celtics, they go, second?
Second.
Alright, second by Sal, any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, those opposed? Thank you very much, it's a lot of work.
We do have a bunch of other, um, policies that we're vetting through, um, our attorney, that really had to do with a lot of the harassment, uh, kind of issues and making sure that. We're following, uh, all the legalities that need to be in there, so we hopefully will have those, uh, presented for our next meeting for first reading.
Okay.
We do have one reading for the, um, second reading, and it's the policy. Um, J J I V, the interscholastic athletics. And so. This was presented, uh, previously, and this would be the second reading. And basically, um, you know, we really wanted to make sure that no individual was penalized, um, if they chose not to participate. And that was unanimous, and everybody felt that was important.
I make a motion to approve the interscholastic athletics policy, J J I V.
Can I just ask?
Now's the time, questions?
Soon. I don't want, um, perfection to get in the way of progress, but I appreciate where we're going here. With the line, the third paragraph. What are we saying, choose, what are they, if a student athlete chooses not to participate? What are we saying? That they, what is not participate, not participate in the game, practice?
Anything, any athletics.
That they felt, right, and I think, you know, there's lots of situations now. Where students may opt not to participate for a variety of reasons. Um, and it's not to, you know, penalize anybody, you know, hazing, or. Not being able to play in future games, et cetera. Um, and you know, obviously. If a, if a student just say practice, never went to practice, obviously, that's a different situation.
That's, that's kinda where it was going.
Right, so that would be somebody who obviously, uh, you know, if you don't ever attend practice, you certainly probably wouldn't be a starter. Um, but if a student, you know, opted not to participate because maybe they were concerned, um, about, uh, you know. Getting hurt, or they were having a bad day, or they weren't feeling well, or there was, you know, a mental health issue, or there was. I don't know, some other conflict or something going on that they were not, you know, in a place and chose not to play for a variety of reasons, that would not be penalized for that.
Yeah, and I, I. Yeah, and I get, it just, it seems very vague.
Well, it's gonna have to be interpreted based on the situation, right? I mean, I think that's, that's.
Would never be able to cover every single reason.
Everything. It'd be impossible.
No, I just want to make, I want to make sure that coaches have the ability to, if a student just simply cannot attend practice on time or whatever, they choose not to, that they should be punished from a playing time perspective. And I don't want that to be taken out of them.
Right. No, that was not the intention of the policy.
Okay.
I'll read it again, and if a student athlete chooses not to participate, the district will not penalize the athlete for not participating. So you may have to modify that later if there's an issue, but at this particular point, we don't anticipate one, but that's.
Like I said, I don't want perfection to get in the way of progress.
I say down the road, if it becomes an issue, we come back and we get more clear on that. Is that fine? Does that work? All right.
I have a comment, I have a comment too.
Yes.
So under section two, Leominster High School Regulations, line two, we heard testimony from the athletics director and students and some coaches that, that coaches, you know, it was, it's been practiced that coaches had their, the ability to stop a game if deemed unsafe. So I just want to make sure I mention it for anyone who had questions either here or publicly, that it is listed in here, as coaches have the prerogative to request their players to refrain from any outside competition once the players are selected for the squad if deemed in the best interest of the team.
I mean, if you get to the field and the field's a mess, are you really gonna send your players out and get hurt?
Yeah, for any reason.
Yeah.
I think it means you can't play on another team.
That's a wonderful team, that they, you know, they have this schedule set up, because there was an issue with you. Right, you can't, they can prevent somebody from playing, say, on a travels team that has nothing to do.
Like AAU versus high school.
Right, if you're on the high school team, then they might decide. That's how I. You know, you can't be on the basketball team and be wrestling for somebody else or something, you know, or play.
So, so to my point that the coaches, it's not memorialized in this policy that the coach can stop competition if they think it's unsafe, or is it?
I think they can.
So, so if something is. I think we've all been at games where coaches have ended the game.
Right, which is practice, but if policy doesn't match practice.
Right. So that has, you know, Dave had said that that is something that has been going on for years, you know, if there's something that is detrimental to the team as a whole, they can choose not to.
So.
And it's not limited to anything specific, but.
So I think we should support the coaches and say that in the policy. If it's, if that's the practice, and it has been for years, it should be in our policy that that's the practice.
So I guess when they, I mean, when we were talking about that, it was specifically referencing the safety of players based on, you know, sort of the field, or if there was a threat against, you know, for whatever reason, we were in a situation where there was a school that was.
Threats or something like that, yeah.
It was, it was in that context that they do that.
But still, it shouldn't just be memorialized in policy.
That's.
I don't see why it shouldn't be. I don't know if there's an argument, I don't know if there's an argument there it shouldn't be in policy.
I know we've been working on this for a while, we could bring it back and.
I mean, I think.
But if we're doing it, they have done it for years, it should, it should really be in policy. Because like, if you took any other policy out and said, well, here's something that we've been doing for years, but we're not gonna mention it in policy.
Well, that's past practice.
Right.
Policy is always the broad strokes, and practice is the minutia. So in policy, it's always a little bit more broader umbrella.
I question it, what's in the M I A regulations regarding like forfeitures or coaches making those decisions?
Well, when we had talked to M I, when I had spoke to M I A, they, you know, obviously said anytime anybody forfeits, it's a forfeit, and it counts against your, you know, overall standings to reach, you know, higher level of competition, et cetera, et cetera. They were in support of individuals, you know, again, you have sort of what we are saying, that if an individual student did not feel, you know, that they were able to participate for a variety of reasons, then that was an individual, you know, choice. And typically speaking.
If you have past practice, past practice is the past practice. So if you put a policy, and I'm just playing it all from all angles, trying to think it through, if you put in here at the discretion of the coach, if at the coach's discretion, or if it's the coach's opinion that for safety reasons or whatever, and then, then it could be anything, literally, and it could exceed past practice, it could go beyond past practice. It's not, we're just saying, for any reason.
Right, and the coaches always touch base with the athletic director, it's not making, it's unilateral.
So I get there, I'm the coach, I'm like, oh, man, these guys, they beat everybody.
Again.
They beat everybody.
Do we trust our coaches, or do we not trust our coaches?
This is the whole idea of policy.
That's what I'm saying. You're agreeing with me?
No.
The, the idea of policy is to not make it so vague that people can do whatever they want.
A hundred percent.
And so right now, it's not vague, I mean, it's not people can do whatever they want because they go to their boss, who is the athletic director around, you know, specific circumstances.
But don't you think that's exactly what's gonna happen if you say it's up to the coach's discretion?
Then it's.
No.
Now, they can just.
No, because past practices told us that they do it when they need to, and they said for years, this is how they've been doing it.
Safety for the team, I think the issue that has been brought before, so the concerns that folks from, some folks that have talked is around not wanting players of opposite sex being on teams or playing other teams with opposite sex.
So, so because of that one issue, can't, we can't just mention the whole thing.
The elephant in the room, which is that.
All right, so what do you want to put in here? Because I can't really talk about what I don't know it is you want to put in there.
And we don't want somebody to say, oh, my gosh, they have a really good team, we don't want to lose to them, so we're not gonna go out.
No coach at L H S is going to do that.
All right, so what do you want us to put in here?
You don't believe that? Okay, well, all those coaches that might be watching, that's really rough.
Well, I, so what do you want to put in here?
I think we should support what the athletics director said, that the coaches have made practice, made decisions in the past for the benefit of the team or for the protection of the team, and that they have that ability. I don't, I don't see why we shouldn't memorialize that. I don't see why we, we have to not mention it.
I mean, I think that part of the concern was that coaches would be getting pressure from people who have their own agendas, as opposed to them making, you know, sort of a decision based on, you know, the field is torn up and we are not going to play on a field that, you know, is torn up.
My original policy included protections against the coach, too, to make the decision so that they would not be unjust punished for, for making that decision. There, there should be protections for the coaches.
Right, but it's, it's not your, what you're, it doesn't mean that the coaches won't be pressured by individuals, and.
Yeah, we're talking sports.
Correct. Right. Talking about.
I'm just thinking of, I don't want to call it a forfeiture, but when a game has had to end early, it's because of an environmental situation. It's the field, it's, there's a fight starting in the crowd, there's other.
Right. Yeah. Extenuating circumstances.
Which is, to me, is different than, I just don't feel safe playing that team.
Robin, I told you about what I had written in the Globe, and this, the team and Sharon, they ran into a problem. I'm not gonna go into specifics about what kind of problem, but the end result that Sharon decided to get away from the Hockamuck League because their players were smaller in size and stature than the rest of the Hockamuck players.
It's a safety.
The Hockamuck, so I'm not making this up. In the Globe, look it up.
Nobody, nobody's questioning that.
And so it comes up, you know, you guys are talking about having to do this and having that.
Just, just trying to support what the coaches already do. That's what the athletics director said. They already do it. They already do, it's not in policy.
The thing you have to realize, they would, they went along, they spoke with M I A A, they spoke with other things, and they have to go along with what M I A A recommended.
So.
It's not what, what the, what the athletic director decides, it's not what the teacher or the football teacher or whatever, it's what M I A A decides in the best interest of the students and the teachers.
We agree. So just, just to keep this going, so Josh, you hear what Melissa said?
I do, but for the record, no one, I hadn't, I didn't mention anything about gender-related or anything.
That's fine.
I'm just saying, in general, our coaches are making decisions that they're not protected by policy. And the athletics director sat at that very table and told us that. And if we don't provide policy to protect them, they could be subject to some sort of M I H H review.
And what, what, and, and nobody's necessarily disagreeing with you or the coaches, what they're saying is, if you get, and this is sports, right? Let's face it, a lot of emotion. I've seen parents get banned from coming to games in the past, right? And we've all seen that. This gets emotional, so.
They're spending shoes this year.
What they're saying, not necessarily disagreeing, what they're saying is, how do we stop a coach that gets in and says, you know what, they've won 10 out of the last 11 games, we got no shot against these guys, we're gonna just, you know.
I have, not coaching staff, but that's not.
I get it, but that's, and I do too, but I'm just saying, that's, it, it kind of opens the, it opens the door.
No.
I think it's embarrassing to think that any of the students or the coaches that are here in the school system would think in that way. After the testimony that we heard them all say, the students who came, the coaches who came, the athletics director came, there's nothing about what they say that should lead us to believe that they're gonna throw a game because the other team's better. I don't get that.
I, I didn't say that. I said, it opens it up.
I said it.
Right. It opens it up to anything. There are no parameters, anything. You just decide you get there and you don't want to play, you come up with a reason, and you're done, and we're trying to avoid that.
Some people said that they didn't trust. Just gonna say that.
I say, this is life, this is real life.
Let me just clarify my statement. I trust the coaches that we have now, that I know right now, that I've been at the games and I support. Have I had bad experiences with coaches in the past? Yes. Do I anticipate that a parent with a different personality, is that an issue with the coach in the past? Yes. I'm just saying, we need a policy, based on your request, we're trying to come to some middle ground, and I'm up with the broad stroke, but I also don't want it so broad that a coach.
I don't know how this.
What's that?
I, I don't know how this is possibly be seen as middle ground. It's so vague, I'm just.
I think, I think it's more specific than the previous policy was, and again.
Interpretation, if you'd like to add something.
So.
This guideline is a specific criteria.
So where it says, Melissa, if a student athlete chooses not to participate, the district will not penalize the athlete for not participating. So you want something that says, if the coach determines that they don't want to participate, the district is not gonna penalize them.
The coach should be afforded the same protection as the student.
So basically, that's what you're saying. You want to add a line in here that said, if a coach decides or coaches chooses not to participate, the district will not penalize the athlete for not participating. Is that?
And can I just clarify, you mean as the team and not as the individual athlete?
For, so the individual athlete makes a decision for themselves.
Right.
The coach makes it for the team.
So you're not saying a coach restricting a player, you're saying?
Correct, correct, right.
So I guess I would be, again, would want something else in there, because right now, if, you know, I think most reasonable coaches, right? And we have reasonable coaches now, but there have been coaches in the past, my, both my kids have played three sports here, and they've had wonderful coaches, but there's been times where I've been on the athletic committee and there's been complaints by parents about certain coaches and about certain, you know, behavior that is allowed, not allowed, whatever. So it comes up. So we have to make sure that we're not, that there's gotta be some checks and balances, and it can't come down to personal biases, whether, you know, that's religion, or whether it's ethnicity or race or gender, or rural versus urban or whatever, it can't come down to that.
Right.
So we're trying to come up with a policy that, you know, provides, you know, that ability and not based on certain biases, which is why, you know, we want.
So I think this is why we went with the word safety.
So in that example, right, if, if, if the coach did something wrong, they were in violation of an employee handbook, most likely, in, I don't know, a situation, but, but they are held accountable through a policy that is their employee agreement. The protection should be afforded to them as well, right? So if they make a mistake and they do something, maybe they, they have too many practices or do something inappropriate with a student, right? They're held accountable through a process and a policy. We're saying that we're gonna protect them for behavior through a policy.
Good, then write it in there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
That's all it says.
Take a step back. I tried to do that, right? I tried to bring this conversation to the full, full committee.
You were bringing it for a certain agenda item, not for just all, you know, fix, right?
No.
You were, you were doing it for the protection of female athletes, is what that policy specifically stated.
He said all athletes from the beginning.
All right, but just, I'm just trying to frame this so we can move, we almost had a.
So, so what we can do is we can revisit.
Yes. Here's what you're saying, though, and just understand, not agree to, I'm just trying to facilitate this, right? What you're saying is, if for any reason a coach decides that they don't want to participate in the game, for every reason it is, they're not penalized. That's what you're saying.
But that, that may not necessarily be.
I'm just, that's what you, that's what.
I'm saying, whatever, whatever rights you're gonna afford the student, you should afford the coach. If you want to add in there, the coaches made by the decision are subject to review by the athletics director, so be it, and, and enter in parameters for the athletics director to take a look at those decisions and say, hey, this decision was made on this date, was it warranted? Is there any sort of coaching council that we can offer that coach? And look at it. You can't do that with a student, we could totally do it with a coach.
Or students, not a whole team.
Right. Well, student, you're gonna, you're gonna honor their decision, their, their safety choice. The coach is gonna make a decision based upon their, their evaluation of the entire situation. If he makes the wrong one, he or she makes the wrong one, then the athletics director can take, review that decision and point out what went wrong and how to make a better choice in the future, or whatever it may be, just like what Greg is saying, some sort of progressive discipline or held accountable to some existing policy.
If you made a decision, there might be discipline.
Right.
Right.
So, so. That's fine to put in there. That's fine to put in there.
With no.
So the obvious.
Because there could be consequences.
But they, but they're making decisions now without that, because we don't have it in policy.
Well, I think that they're making those decisions in conjunction with their supervisor, who is adhering to that.
But to that athletic director, right?
Who's athletic director, right? I mean, that's their boss.
Which is what we just said.
Right.
We just want to memorialize in policy. So we're back to full circle, we all agree what's going on, we just want to memorialize in policy.
We will remand it back and take a look at it.
I'm okay with that, but at the same time, this is the second reading for future. Could we maybe have this discussion at the first reading so that we're not going all the way?
Did we even have a copy of the first reading?
Yes, you did.
See, Josh, I would prefer something that says that if a student or the coach chooses not to participate for the following reasons, you know, not so vague, but then not so tight.
I'm with that, too.
You know what I'm saying?
That would be, that would be.
And then.
That would never, I get all that.
We, we should.
No, no, I didn't say it all, but I think you could word it such.
Like safety as an example.
Every, you can't possibly cover every single situation.
He could put examples.
But it avoids the.
Avoids that, at least that's a portion of it, I think that might satisfy, I think dramatically, we're gonna get into that. But I think a student could say.
What needs to be done, to clarify it, I think that's what Josh and um, and Greg are saying, is that they're looking, if I'm, understand this correctly, that they're looking to protect the actions of the coach as well as the student, so that the coach isn't suffering from ramifications from a parent or a group of parents or the public.
There's, you know, just the employee handbook files a lot of this stuff with the coaches, but I think just to your point, a student could say, you know what, I'm in a mental health, not a good day today, I don't want to participate. You can't have a coach say, hey, I'm not, you know, feeling it today, we're gonna cancel. You know, that's not a, a reasonable.
No, but.
Thing for a coach, so, you know, when we're putting that in there, I mean, that's where you get into trouble, so I agree that we can find a middle ground and say, you know, they have to be held accountable by that.
Vague, but not too restrictive.
But not too restrictive, because then you just, you, you paint yourself into a corner, and then uh, there's always another situation that arises.
I like competition, I love sports, I love for kids to have fun, right, I mean, that's the whole point of all this, right? So people make it to pros.
To participate.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, isn't that, isn't that the, the goal?
A hundred percent.
Yeah, that's why we keep adding sports and adding different levels.
That's if we're going back to review it, and I know Greg, you brought up that previous line at the beginning, and I think Dean did too. If a student athlete chooses not to participate, the district will not penalize the athlete for not participating. If we're working on this, that is maybe a little bit vague, I agree, so do we want to say, if a student athlete chooses not to participate in a game, the district will not penalize, because like you said, if you're not participating in practices regularly, there should be.
Problem if that's.
Right, I mean, obviously.
They don't feel safe at practice.
Yeah. Well, you really.
Alright, write that down though, let's write that down before we forget that, you know what I'm saying?
I get it.
So, so it's not just a safety issue.
Alright, in a chat, one at a time, I think we're almost there, so let's, let's go back.
Parent died, you know, or your pet died, and you don't feel like playing, it's not a safety issue. So, you know, there's other reasons why a student may not choose to participate.
I have a problem with that.
So we're almost there, we agree, we just need, we need, so the last comment that Melissa made, let's make sure somebody wrote that down so that we can add that, so we don't start in another two weeks and end up back where we were. So we're picking up from where we left, which is the, the line here regarding a student athlete and the coaches. And everything else is okay in its form?
Yeah, I do, it should be a little more in the works, because otherwise, there are gonna be questions, inevitably, something's gonna come.
Right.
So I do, I agree.
And I appreciate everybody that's worked on this, because I know we spent a lot of time, and everybody's kind of put their agenda kind of over here, and it's, it sort of keeps going like this, but that's okay, that's, that's how things get done.
And, and I think.
Came with a narrow framework, but we have to make sure that we are encompassing all frameworks.
That's fair, yeah.
Quality is the living duck, right?
Well, everything.
Common sense is a living.
You see how long it takes to modify one?
Right.
Let's do it right.
Who's, who's lifetime?
And that's it, you don't have to keep on stretching all your elastic.
Right.
Just put the stuff in there and we're done.
And that should be done next time.
Sounds pretty, sounds pretty.
Finance updates, let's spend some money, it make us all feel better, people are worked hard, they want to spend money.
I would go through all the warrants here.
Alright. I thought there was only one, it said warrant.
Oh, there's warrants.
They are spending all money.
I've got a lot of pressure with Brandon being here right now. For posterity, maybe. Alright, um, general fund warrants.
Yes.
Warrant number forty, two million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, two dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant forty-one, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Warrant forty-two, seven million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. Warrant forty-three, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. Grants and revolving warrants. Warrant number forty, not, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Warrant forty-one, eighty-three thousand, two hundred dollars and thirty-seven cents. Warrant forty-two, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-six cents. And warrant number forty-three, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Alright, you heard the recommendation. But I had a chance to look at it, is there, assume you're making a motion to.
Can I, can I make the motion?
Yes, you can.
Make the motion to.
To the chair.
Warrants, alright. Approve those warrants, sorry.
Second by Sandy, any questions or comments on these, any of them, if not, go ahead. All in favor, those opposed, thank you. Grants.
Did you want to bring up the other topics that?
I read them together, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so um, in, in the finance subcommittee meeting, uh, we met and discussed a few um, expenditures related to professional services for um, uh, around UNIS and employee management, what is, I don't know what you call it, as well as professional services around special education engagement. Um, the, the committee unanimously agreed um, to move this forward to the full committee for awareness and don't you think there's an approval? The last piece was that we also voted unanimously to um, bring to the full committee to ask that Robin uh, begins to uh, start planning for a strategic, when our strategic plan expires next year, and start planning, making plans around that um, for future.
There's no vote or anything, it's just a recommendation.
No, just to bring everybody, everybody's attention, if there's any questions or comments.
Alright. So did we vote on the warrants?
We did.
Did.
So, um, Melanie, are we gonna do any transfers, or is that with the last meeting that we did? For capital sort of things, and do we have a list of those? Okay, alright. And you think we'll be making any capital, you know, sort of projects through the summer? Mm-hmm. Okay, alright. Alright, so there might be some capital, usually at the end of the year, we have some, you know, either salary wages or expenses we transfer over, okay, so we'll get that maybe before the end of the year. So you get them all bid, get them bid, so they can do the work during the summer, and the students aren't here. Good, okay. We are making our way there. We're not voting on next two items, we voted on the last day of school. And I think we're just looking for a, oh, new world business, any new world business?
Did you?
That's tomorrow.
That was tomorrow, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, I'll bring my big cold raincoat and have to walk along like a duck. Can I get pictures?
Appreciate it.
I want pictures.
Ron, everybody, I don't care what part of the state I go to, everybody knows Ron Hall. You could sign autographs, you could sign autographs, Ron.
I hear, is Ronnie gonna be there?
Yeah.
I've heard that several times.
He does all the time, they get really upset, they, they say, where the hell have you been, here I am, I'm late, it doesn't matter.
Alright, anything else on the new world business, anything else, yes, yes.
I didn't hear it mentioned before, that CTEI is having a senior awards banquet Thursday.
This Thursday?
It's Thursday, it's five, two, six here, and then at six o'clock, they do the awards in the cafeteria, it really is a nice affair, so I guess I'd bring that up.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Look at you staying on top of things.
Hey, I'm there, I know, a lot of that stuff is.
It's dying, I know, it's, it's gonna happen really quick.
Next month.
Yeah, every weekend, uh. Alright, anything else, if not, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, okay, thank you all.